Goodness for IT. Let's start that one again. Public hearings, we have the Johnson 99 zoning district amendment ZDA dash zero seven dash two three. I'd like to open that public hearing if there is anybody in the room that would like to speak on or against the Johnson 99 zoning district amendment ZDA zero seven dash two three. Just come to the lectern, let us know your name. And if you're not from Albany County, let us know where you're from. All right. How about online? Would anybody online like to speak on or against? Last call online and in the room. Commissioners entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Well, next open the public hearing for the double bar L zoning district amendment ZDA dash zero eight dash two three. Do that process again. Anybody to speak on or against the double bar L zoning district amendment ZDA zero eight two three? All right. How about online, on or against double bar L? Let's call in person or online. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those, uh, public hearings are closed. Item four, comments from the public. Uh, we'll take them first in person. If anybody would like to make a public comment, just come to the lectern, please. Take it first on, in person. All right. How about online? Last call for public comments. Commissioners entertain a motion to close the public comments.
I move that we close public comment, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Five, disclosures. Commissioner Jones, any disclosures?
You don't believe so?
Commissioner DeBarra and his disclosures.
I have none.
And I have none also. Six, considerations of changes on the agenda. Please, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Can I add an application for a catering permit for SKY O L LLC doing business in Snowy Range ski area? Their event is this Saturday and forgot about it. It's the timelines. It happens. But she wanted to know who could get this put on the agenda for today, so.
Can we put that at twenty-two A?
Happy birthday. Thank you.
Thanks. Jennifer Brady, anything? All right. Uh, item seven, approval of the consent agenda. Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That moves us to the regular agenda. Uh, item eight, proclaim the week of April fourteenth to the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Mr. Terry, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning public.
And those online. I'm Robert Terry. I'm the Assistant Chief of Police. I am joined here by Chief Brian Brown and Lieutenant Tom Smith. Also in the room is dispatchers Brendan Levens and Sarah Felton. Uh, today we're, we're bringing in a proclamation for to have the county Albany recognize, uh, national tele, uh, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April fourteenth through April twentieth this year. Um, a little bit about our dispatch center. It, the dispatchers for Albany County dispatch for not only police, but they also dispatch for the Albany County Sheriff's Office, uh, fire and EMS. They literally handle thousands of calls per year and they're the voice of, uh, calmness in a time when people need help. With your permission, I would like to maybe publicly acknowledge our dispatchers. Currently, we have eleven dispatchers, uh, two of which are supervisors. They range in service from twenty-five plus years to just over five months. So, uh, if you may, I'd like to acknowledge our dispatchers. I'll just start off with seniority first. Uh, our, our most senior dispatcher is Stacy Gonzalez. She's been with us for over twenty-five years, uh, followed by Rebecca Simpson with over twenty years, Yancy Brown, who just approached twenty years, Heather Davis, Sarah Felton, Samantha V. Hill, McGuire Field, Braylon Levens, and Brenna Roberts, who is our newest dispatcher. And their supervisor are our two dispatch supervisors, who are Kim Meyer and Jennifer Graham. So that's my presentation. I'm here for questions. We thank you for your consideration to make April fourteenth to the twentieth National Public Telecommunications Week.
Thank you for bringing this quote.
Yeah. And with the, uh, dispatchers here, would you guys stand? Appreciate it. Thank you, Rob. I'll read the proclamation that we have in front of us. Whereas Albany County is a political subdivision of the state of Wyoming, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas the Albany County Commission is committed to providing a high-quality emergency communication system to residents of the region, and whereas the safety of our deputies firefighters and EMS responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who use the nine-one-one system, whereas the Albany County Commission recognizes the professional and unending services of the nine-one-one emergency communications operators who answer nine-one-one calls on a daily basis, and whereas the nine-one-one emergency communications operators are the link between people calling for help in an emergency situation and the emergency response agencies who arrive on the scene, and whereas the nine-one-one emergency communication operators are the true backbone of the nine-one-one system, whereas the President of the United States has historically acknowledged the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and therefore being resolved that on behalf of the nine-one-one emergency communication operators in the Albany County, Wyoming, the Albany County Commission hereby declares the week of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and encourages all local governments to sign a similar resolution, and all nine-one-one emergency communication centers are encouraged to celebrate this week with appropriate activities and commemorations. And then it will be read adopted by us second day of April. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Commissioners, I entertain a motion for item eights.
I move that we approve, uh, proclaiming the week of April fourteenth. Telecommunications, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Nine, proclaiming month of April twenty twenty-four as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Sarah, are you here or online? Should I move on from that or do you? Thank you all. I'll read the, uh, proclamation. Whereas children are our future, no child should suffer abuse and neglect, and whereas victims of child abuse and neglect are known to be at higher risk for experiencing post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, malaconic, academic achievement, drug use, juvenile delinquency, teenage pregnancy, and adult criminality. Each child is precious and deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nurturing environment, free from harmful effects of abuse and neglect. Whereas an estimated eight hundred children in Wyoming are victims of abuse and neglect each year, and whereas effective child abuse intervention and community prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among community members, social services, and law enforcement agencies, schools, churches, businesses, and civic organizations. And whereas each April, Child Advocacy Centers of Wyoming, the Children's Trust Fund Board, Prevent Child Abuse Wyoming, Wyoming Citizen Review Panel, the Wyoming Department of Family Services, the Wyoming Office of the Attorney General, Division of Victim Services, the Wyoming Guardian Ad Lightum Program, County of Albany, Wyoming, and other partners join together in an effort to prevent abuse and neglect through outreach, education, intervention. There now therefore I, uh, P. Ghostor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Chair of the County of Albany, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-four as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. And since Sarah is not here, uh, I entertain a motion for that proclamation.
I move that we, um, approve the proclamation, um, proclaiming April twenty twenty-four as Child Abuse Awareness Month, Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item ten, present for discussion, the presentation of Albany County Community Partners, what present funding request from Laramie Reproductive Health. Jill, please. Great. Thank you. Good morning.
Hello County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Jeanette Anderson. I'm the Executive Director for the Laramie Reproductive Health Clinic, known as LRH. And with me here today is Cindy Paulson. It is her birthday today, so I appreciate her coming. She is one of our medical assistants at the clinic, and I asked her to be here today, so if you had any clinical questions, she could answer them for you. It is the mission of the Laramie Reproductive Health Clinic to provide compassionate care and education in this supportive environment. We believe everyone deserves access to high-quality health care and to have their unique reproductive health needs addressed. LRH plays a critical role in advancing the health and well-being of our community and aligns closely with the needs of the area, especially where sexually transmitted infections are concerned. Recently, OPA, the Office of Population Affairs, released concerns surrounding the increased rates of syphilis within the state of Wyoming, and required about the measures that are being taken by Title X clinics to help reduce the spread of this disease. Laramie Reproductive Health is giving it, uh, focus to education and access to testing at low to no cost for our patients. With the rise of syphilis and low numbers of patients getting screened, we created a combo test that includes everything, syphilis, HIV, gonorrhea, and chlamydia, the offices, and the collection site for thirty dollars. If an indigenous patient cannot afford that thirty dollars, uh, we will use our grand money to make sure that they are covered. It's our focus to address this pressing community need that is on the rise, both with HIV and syphilis within the state of Wyoming and specifically within Albany County. According to the Wyoming Health Department, last year there was a fifty-nine percent increase in new HIV cases in Wyoming and a fifty-four percent increase in syphilis cases since twenty eighteen. And although syphilis can be cured with specific antibiotics, unfortunately untreated syphilis can sometimes cause major health issues, including death in both the patient and the unborn child. While sexually transmitted infections sometimes make their presence known, uh, most people have no symptoms, so they're not getting tested. And the only way to know is to get yourself tested. So routine testing, early detection, and timely treatment and interventions will help prevent the progression of this disease and why we are asking for funding.
Uh, the city of Laramie is also home to a disproportionate population of individuals aged fifteen to twenty-four. Uh, these individuals are living below the federal poverty line, and according to the most recent report from the Human's Right Commission, Laramie is also objectively the most of the B T Q plus inclusive city in Wyoming. Uh, these demographics comprise a substantial adverse population in need of targeted intervention, uh, which directly aligns with the goal to decrease spread of STIs in Wyoming. As a nonprofit clinic, this goal is only achievable through external funding. So we would like to prevent, or we would like to present a request for funding from Albany County to support and engage individuals in Albany County for routine STI testing and education. This includes that combination STI, um, HIV and syphilis test that will make it more affordable and accessible to Wyoming's adverse population. We're requesting forty-six hundred dollars in funding to prepare four hundred rapid HIV and syphilis combo tests for an out-of-bout clinic. This will allow LRH to provide screenings to twice as many individuals in the community and reach a larger population throughout the county. The plea waived in FDA-approved HIV and syphilis combo tests will be purchased through Chembiode diagnostics. This manufacturer presented us with a promotion, which includes a free microtest reader with the purchase of four hundred tests. Um, further, the specificity and accuracy in detecting both HIV and syphilis is ninety-eight point nine percent in sensitivity and ninety-nine point nine percent specificity and accuracy in detecting both HIV and syphilis. So the included microreader that they include as well also eliminates the possibility of human error and increases the confidence of those results. In, uh, twenty twenty-three, LRH provided over three hundred rapid HIV and syphilis tests combined. And in just the first month of twenty twenty-four, LRH promoted affordable testing with the goal of increasing compliance and successfully provided seventy-eight, um, rapid HIV and syphilis test batches. So we're optimistic that the incidence of syphilis and HIV, um, will be able to increase our, our reach in the community and contribute, meaning, uh, in reducing the incidence and decreasing the stigma and biases associated with screening, increasing patient compliance, and promoting the shared pressure to improve overall health and welfare for individuals in Albany County. Investing in this project is essential, not only because it improves the quality of life for individuals in our community, but also helps to safeguard public health and reducing transmission of HIV and syphilis. Uh, furthermore, by operating this test at a low order of cost for individuals, we ensure equitable access to vital health care services, fostering a more inclusive and supportive community for our Laramie residents. This initiative directly supports Albany County's vision by addressing public health concerns and promoting sustainability by preventing sexually transmitted infection.
Thank you, Jeanette. Thank you, Cindy. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, Jeanette, so how do you intend to get this information out to the public as far as educating them that these tests are available for such a low price?
Beyond social media, which we do postings every day, um, I'm actually going to out to all the businesses and talking to people about what we're doing, um, and handing them our brochures and, uh, just putting the word out, as well as going to UDA, LCCC, and YOTech.
I think that, uh, because you do all that, the word of mouth, uh, the people at risk is fantastic. And they, they really step up and go in and see you.
You know what we're finding is, uh, if we do an individual test, like individual syphilis test, we're charging forty-four dollars for that. And then we're saying to them, it's only thirty dollars, and you get the whole gamut. So let's just do it all, because if you think you might have something, try to chase something else. And it's actually worked. We really feel like people are getting more testing because we'll have this combo test.
Cindy, what are you attributing the rise of these conditions to?
Sure, sure. Um, I mean, we've seen the increase in incidents by fifty-nine percent, uh, for HIV, fifty-four percent for syphilis in Wyoming. And even though it's affecting every community, I think the, the racial and ethnic groups bear, um, bear the brunt of those longstanding social inequities. I think having access to testing, uh, creates a stigma and in access to testing, but now that we're increasing, uh, increasing the, the testing that we're able to offer, I think we've seen a rise, uh, numbers from that. But also the, the incidence of, uh, unprotected sex of, of high-risk behaviors has increased exponentially as well. We're also seeing increase, um, in, in states like South Dakota and in New Mexico that also have a lot of indigenous, um, populations. So in, in counties like Greenock County, we're seeing a rise, especially in, uh, the Wind River population. So we're trying to reach all of those minority populations, which we know we have a, quite a few of here in Laramie, especially with our, um, college population who are engaging in a lot of those communities.
And Cindy, once these tests are done, will they be getting the, uh, the results all at once, not several phone calls with the results of each one of these? Will the results come in as one?
We have a new patient portal, and it's actually finishing up right now. We have one, but it's being approved. And so if there is a positive, they are asked to call the clinic and then speak directly to one of our nurse practitioners. Jason Sungroth is the main person that contacts them and does treatment. But, um, we work directly with LabCorp. And so what we're doing is, as soon as the results are, are given, we get access to that. So we can call the patient right away and get treatment started right away. We've also set up an indigent program with LabCorp, so no longer do those patients get any bill whatsoever, whatsoever from us or from LabCorp.
I know what's great about these tests too is the, the new combo test that we're proposing is an in-house test, and it's faster than the tests that we're offering currently. So these patients will get the results in twenty minutes at, at the latest.
What, what hours are forty-eight hours or something like?
Um, sure, yeah. So if, if a patient did test positive for syphilis, we would be, um, we would ask them to come back and do a blood draw just to, um, go ahead and verify that. But our blood results come back exceedingly quickly, and we always give a call on those. But otherwise, patients are getting those results same day or the next day for blood results.
That's great. Yeah.
Are you guys able to, uh, do the treatment piece if a person finds out and then how quickly? And if somebody can't pay, are you able to cover those?
We have medicines in our lab that are strictly set aside for indigenous patients. And then those that have insurance, we usually do a prescription to their pharmacy of choice. Um, but yeah, we treat them as soon as we can and their partners if needed.
And there is a, a massive shortage in the United States right now with bacillin, and that's something that we have in our clinic, and we're excited to give patients if, if they need that treatment as well.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
No, none.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
You're done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Generally, our process is, is we'll take everybody that we did Tuesday, and then you guys today. And then when we get towards the budget, um, we'll make decisions around the budget. So we'll let you know June-ish, maybe.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Item eleven, present for approval, approach license for Frank Hopper on County Road one, or four sixteen, Dinwiddie Road, Laramie, Wyoming, in section two, Township fifteen north, range seventy-eight west. Rob, good morning.
Good morning. The, uh, this is for an access on the Dinwiddie Road in the north, uh, western part, end of the road, and it's in the Centennial area, but, uh, everything looks good in the Hopper, so.
Awesome. Commissioners, any questions for Rob? Uh, and entertain a motion for eleven, please.
I move that we approve item eleven as presented, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item twelve, present for consideration, the Johnson ninety-nine zoning district amendment ZDA dash zero seven dash two three. Joe, good morning.
Morning Commissioners. All right. So the applicant is Johnson ninety-nine Ranch. Uh, this is located in Government Lot Three, south of State Highway one thirty right of way, Government Lot Seven, excluding the city of Laramie and the southeast, south, the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, excluding the city of Laramie of section twenty-seven, Township sixteen north, range seventy-four west. Um, rain, uh, the request is to change the zoning of the entire thirty-five acre parcel from agricultural commercial. Uh, there were some reviews. The Albany County Assessor's Office, Chelsea Matthews, had no concerns. Uh, Roden Bridge, Rob Fisher, had no concerns. Treasurer's Office, Tracy Fletcher, had no concerns. Uh, Luke Hawkins, Albany County Fire, had, had concerns about access. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Holly Dyer, um, had concerns about ceiling, concrete corrosion and erosion. Her full comments can be seen in the review section. Um, Y dot had no comments, and, um, Wyoming Game and Fish had no comments. Um, the applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution are chapter three, section five. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter three, section five G. The Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings. The applicant has provided such maps or surveys as required. The proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the long-range growth plan and the priority growth areas, uh, and other applicable land use plans, uh, that the applicant has demonstrated. The proposed zoning district amendment complies with all following criteria, and that pursuant to chapter three, section five D of the Albany County zoning resolution, the applicant has provided the required notice by posted sign publication and certified mailing. Uh, staff analysis, the planning department believes this is a good area for commercial zoning. This parcel is contiguous with the Laramie Regional Airport and is right off Highway one thirty. There is an agreement, um, being worked on between the airport and prospective buyer of the property that will ensure compatibility with each of the land uses. Findings of fact, findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, discussed this. Um, lots of discussion was surrounded about the potential of the easement between the airport and the prospective buyer. There was also discussion about potential uses this property could have on it if the zoning was changed to commercial. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to one, uh, to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approve the Johnson ninety-nine zoning district amendment application, ZDA zero seven two three, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, conclusions of law. As each are stated in the staff report, the lone citizen vote, uh, was of concern of what uses could potentially be on this property if it were some commercial and the potential impacts to the airport. I will give an update. Um, I got news yesterday that there was a clear zone easement that has been recorded in the clerk's office for the entire, um, parcel. So that easement between the airport and the prospective buyer has been taken care of.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions?
I have none.
Well, you covered my question with, with the clear zone, so, uh, I entertain a motion for item twelve. If there are no questions.
I move that we, uh, approve item twelve as presented. Do we need to say incorporating?
Yeah.
Incorporating findings, facts, and conclusions of law. Thank you. Uh, second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item thirteen, present for consideration, the double bar L zoning district amendment application. Joe, please.
All right. The applicant is the bar L Investments LLC. The address is six, ten, and twenty-four Cannibal Road. Um, all, uh, these are all three lots of the four-mile acre subdivision. Um, their request is to change the zoning of all three parcels to conversion from rural residential. There were some reviews. Um, the Assessor's Office, Chelsea Matthews, had no concerns. Roden Bridge, uh, Rob Fisher, had no concerns. Treasurer's Department, Tracy Fletcher, had no concerns. Uh, Fire District, Luke Hawkins, had concerns about access. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Holly Dyer, has concerns about erosion. Her full comments can be seen in the review section. Y dot, Taylor Report, uh, commented on access, noted that the work within the right of way will need appropriate permitting, and commented on the drainage. Full comments can be seen in the review section. The applicable sections of the Albany County zoning intervention is chapter three, section five. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter three, section five G of the, uh, the Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings. That the applicant has provided such maps or surveys as required. The proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the long-range growth plan and the priority growth areas and other applicable land use plans that the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed zoning district amendment complies with the following criteria and that pursuant to chapter three, section five D of the Albany County zoning resolution. The applicant has provided the required notice by posted sign publication and certified mailing. Staff analysis, the planning department believes that this proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. This location makes sense for commercial zoning because of the presence of two highways intersecting. Each commercial use in the land use table should be looked at when considering whether these parcels should be commercially zoned. None of the land use presented in the applicant's narrative are final with this application. Uh, findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. The discussion that Planning and Zoning had, uh, was about, about compatibility, uh, with surrounding properties and how the zoning district amendment would fit in to all of the plans that the county has adopted. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approve the double bar L zoning district amendment, ZDA zero eight two three, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, Joe, I just have one. Um, I was present at the P and Z meeting when this was all discussed. Nothing was discussed about the fact that obviously it's going to be a lot more traffic, truck traffic and all. This is a popular route as far as bicycling, and maybe, um, Rob, you can answer this. Is there going to be any additional signage as far as, um, now that, you know, this is going to be a major, uh, road that's going to be used by this, um, this applicant as far as one of their businesses propose to the safety of riders out there?
So right now, this is just, um, whether it fits to be commercial zoning. Um, and they don't have, they're not required to answer anything about that. Um, but if, if they want signs on their property, then they, I mean, we have sign permits that they can get, to be able to put signs up. Um, but maybe Rob would be able to answer whether there will be signage about like the bikes. I'm not sure.
Uh, I think that's some, like, concern we probably have to look into, but I haven't really. And really, press that bridge in.
Okay. But that's something we can discuss down the line, because as I said, I know it's a very popular route here playing to bicycle. Okay, thank you.
Dariani? All right, I entertain a motion for thirteen then, please.
I move that we approve the double bar L zoning district amendment, ZDA oh eight dash twenty-three, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law. Second, stated.
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Oh, I guess you go a couple more. Present for consideration, item fourteen, renewable, renewal of the twenty-twenty-three mobile home park license for Kbar D Mobile Home Park. Seems like this might be twenty-twenty-four.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
For this one had been turned in probably five months ago, but we were waiting on stuff to come back into compliance with this property, and it has been, so we are now ready to be able to license them.
Could you kind of elaborate on stuff?
Yeah, so they had, they had to, they had to clean up the property. There were more trailers than were permitted on their license, so those had to be removed. So that was the big one.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Any questions, Commissioners? If not, I entertain a motion for fourteen.
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Fifteen, present for consideration, partial release of the letter of credit provided for the required improvements for the paddocks at Fort Sanders Second Filing, second edition. Joe, please.
Yeah, so John Evans, the developer of the paddocks at Fort Sanders Second Filing and Second Edition, has requested a partial release of the letter of credit. He is requesting a release of four hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars out of the total amount of four hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Jake Schneider, county engineer, has provided comments and determined that there are still items that are deficient, but recommends the county release four hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars, leaving fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The planning department agrees with Mr. Schneider on the release of four hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. The applicant shall supply the planning department with an updated letter of credit showing the amount changed after the approval of the partial release.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions? John, did you ask for more? There was a little bit less. Have they made you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Not an entertaining motion for fifteen.
I move, go ahead, Sid. I move that we approve item fifteen as presented. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion?
Is that clear? Clear how much money is being released?
Yeah, and I can put that in the motion.
Works. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Sixteen, present for consideration, a request for an exemption from the large tract subdivision process for property located in section twenty-seven, Township sixteen north, range seventy-four west, for Jerry Johnson, Christina Johnson, and Beverly Cook. Jory, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So Jerry Johnson, Christina Johnson, and Beverly Cook have requested an exemption from the large tract subdivision regulations to create a hundred-acre tract from a hundred and eighty-six acre tract of land. The Albany County subdivision resolution, Chapter five, Section five, requires exemptions from large tract subdivision regulations to meet the following criteria. They provide a legal description or record of survey, address any water rights on the property, provide a water supply study system for any proposed water system, or provide the disclaimer, no proposed central water supply system, and the division shall create ten or less parcels based upon the information provided. In our review, it meets all the criteria needed to grant the exemption.
Thank you, Jory. Commissioners, any questions? Not an entertaining motion for sixteen, please.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Present for consideration, a request for an exemption from the large tract subdivision, this is item seventeen, process for property located in section eighteen, Township seventeen north, range seventy-four west, for the Page Family Limited Partnership. Jory, please.
Thank you. So with this one, the Page Family Partnership have requested an exemption from the large tract subdivision regulation to create a sixty-two point three eight seven acre tract from a fifteen hundred and eighty-seven acre tract of land. Albany County subdivision resolution, Chapter five, Section five, requires exemptions from these large tract subdivision regulations to meet the following criteria. They need to provide a legal description or record of survey, address any water rights on the property, provide a water supply study for any proposed water system, or provide the disclaimer, no proposed central water supply system, and the division shall create ten or less parcels based upon the information provided with this one as well. It meets all the criteria needed to grant the exemption.
Commissioners, any questions? Jory, one quick question. If they do this and they're, can they continue to do exemptions for the large?
They can do up to ten, so like that parent parcel, if there's enough land, we can do up to ten, as long as they're thirty-five acres or larger, and as long as that remainder parcel is larger than thirty-five acres. So yeah, they can continue to do that.
Thank you, Jory.
If they made all those requirements.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for seventeen, if there are no other questions.
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item eighteen, present for consideration, direct and direct staff to publish amendments to the zoning resolution pertaining to sign regulations and scheduled public hearing. David and?
Yeah, I'll see that. So David, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended the approval of amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution pertaining to the sign regulations. Recent U.S. Supreme Court decisions have created a need to review and rewrite current regulations. The planning department and the county attorney's office worked together to get these rewritten and take them to the planning zoning, and after months of work, they unanimously certified approval of the amendments to sign regulations. So staff is requesting the boards directed to publish these amendments and schedule a public hearing on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. And is there any questions for me?
Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion for eighteen, please.
I move that we approve item eighteen as presented.
And do you have, do you have a public hearing date?
Yeah.
June fourth. Could you add that to your?
And publish the public hearing for June fourth. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries. Thank you, David, and thanks for the work. Nomad did a lot of work on that, too.
I'll pass it along.
Appreciate that. Nineteen, present for approval, the purchase of body camera equipment and licenses for Axon Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars thirty cents. Aaron, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. This is exactly what it says. We are purchasing body camera equipment and the licenses, I believe, coming in as special purpose tax money that are to be used for the purchase of body camera equipment.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, any questions? If not, I entertain a motion for nineteen, please.
I move that we approve the purchase of the body camera equipment as presented in item nineteen. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Twenty, present for approval, submittal of the Wyoming Office of Families, submittal to the Wyoming Office of Family Services, Community Juvenile Services Board's fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six grant application in the amount of sixty-three thousand eight dollars and zero cents, utilizing funds from July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Brady, good morning. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This application is a yearly application that we put in for every year for Community Juvenile Services Board. In our last meeting, the board did decide to continue to fund the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Youth Diversion Program, so that money that we received for this grant goes directly to them, and when we get our award notice, and then we will then contract with them to hammer out those, the rest of the details. And it's the same amount of funding that we received for the last two years, and we could be good to go on with that.
Commissioners, any questions? Not an entertaining motion for twenty?
I move, go ahead, Sid. I move that we approve item twenty as presented. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-one, present for approval, First Amendment to Subrecipient Agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, and Laramie Wrestling Booster Club for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Albany County Recreation Board funding. Brady, agree.
This amendment is for the rec. board funding from last year, which is the current year of funding for the wrestling club. In their application, they were asking for new wrestling mats for the high school, I believe, and their original application came up a few hundred dollars short on their quote, and then because of the shape of the wrestling room, there needed some additional matting that was not just like a regular square. And so this amendment is just adjusting the total amount awarded, which the rec. board did approve in their meeting last week.
Commissioners, any questions? Not an entertaining motion for twenty-one, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-one as presented. Second?
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Brady. Twenty-two, present for approval, the twenty-twenty-four election-style psycho polling locations pursuant to Wyoming State Statute twenty-two dash twelve dash one oh one B. Kayla, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is the listing of our election cycle polling locations for the twenty-twenty-four election cycle. If you'd like, I can read through them. Per Wyoming Statute twenty-two, twelve, one oh one B, the board must approve my polling places for each election cycle. So District thirteen precinct one will be at Laramie High School, thirteen two will be at Spring Creek School, thirteen three will be at Laramie High School, fourteen zero will be at the Albany County Fairgrounds, fourteen zero northern will be at Laramie Peak Fire Hall, fourteen zero will also be at Rock River Town Hall. Of course, those are the same district and precinct, just different polling places. Fourteen zero will also be at Seville Wildlife Research Unit, fourteen two Slade School, fourteen three Indian Paintbrush School, forty-five one Spring Creek School, forty-five two Lincoln Community Center, forty-six one Linford School, forty-six two Linford School, forty-six zero Albany County Fairgrounds, forty-six zero Centennial School, and forty-six zero Harmony School, and we'll also have our absentee polling place, which is all polling places, are all district and precincts for the early voting period for that twenty-eight days prior to the primary and the general elections.
Thank you, Kayla.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions?
Please, please. And Kayla, none of these have changed from the precinct?
So actually, they have. So last, in twenty-two, it's, so Slade School had fourteen two and had fourteen three. It was too many people in one polling place. Fourteen three is our biggest in-town polling place. It's the Indian Hills area. It's a, it's a big polling location, so we have moved them back to Indian Paintbrush there by themselves, and then Slade School will just have one polling place there. It was just too many people. And so we just decided, this is the time to do it. Let's separate them out. Of course, our primary is never as busy. Our general, of course, is going to be busy this year. It's a presidential election, so we're just foreseeing, it's just easier to do it now, separate those out, so we'll continue to have them separate. I'm not sure why we combined them. I don't know, but I think it's just, it's smart from, we'll just learn from the past and go, it's too many people in one location, so let's just separate them out, so.
Very good. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Not an entertaining motion, the, for item twenty-two, please.
I move that we approve the twenty-twenty-four election cycle polling locations.
Second, or?
Yes.
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Kayla. And then twenty-two A, present for approval, application for catering permit for Ski Wyoming LLC doing business to Snowy Range Ski Area for the end-of-season party located at three two five four Highway one thirty Centennial, Wyoming, on April seventh, twenty twenty-four, from eleven a.m. to four p.m.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is a catering permit for Ski Y O LLC, Snowy Range Ski Area. They have their end-of-season party every year. I think it's the last day that maybe the, the ski area is open. Becky Maddox contacted me yesterday, went, oh my gosh, I forgot to get this. Can I get it on? And I said, yeah, I asked Jennifer, and the sheriff also reviewed it as well, and he didn't see any issues with it. So it's just basically for them to have a secondary location to dispense alcohol on their property is all it is, so.
Commissioners, any questions?
Nope.
Not a, I'd entertain a motion for twenty-two A, and I have it if you want to read it.
I got it for everybody. Yeah, I was gonna say, I gave a copy to Terry and to everybody, so makes it easier that way.
Oh, I move that we approve item twenty-two A as presented. Second?